I started. I'm happy to introduce our first speaker this afternoon, Vladimir Takukh, who will speak on discrete selectivity in function spaces.
So... Discrete selectivity, yeah. Yeah. Actually, a little book has been done recently on selection reasons. So this is... this paper is similar to this. So in 2015, me and my student David Guerrero Sanchez, we studied domination of function spaces by second countable ones. And we noticed that an interesting property of the sigma product S of the counter-tubular weight omega_1 takes place. So sigma product consists of all points x in 0, 1 to omega_1 that have only finite many coordinates. And this property is the following one: So if we take any sequence u_n and run over omega of non-empty open subsets of X, then this sequence has a closed discrete selection in the sense that we can pick a point x_n in U_n for every n in omega in such a way that the selection x_n is closed and discrete in the space S. So how do we look at this? Well, and the same property turned out to be true for spaces CP from X to 0, 1, which is closed interval 0, 1, for some wide classes of spaces X. But this property is actually very specific. It's... since I saw it in so many examples, I decided that maybe I'd give the name and study systematically. But, well, okay, let me define it. So the space is discrete and selective if every sequence of non-empty open subsets of X has a closed discrete selection. So... and we could visualize it like that. So we have open sets, 1, and so on, with n, and we can pick points, these green points, in such a way that this set is closed and discrete. And of course, another thing is assumed: this sequence of open sets is chosen to be disjointed. But for example, if all elements of this sequence have a non-empty intersection, then we can choose only one point, because x_n would be the same point. So it's much easier to choose a closed discrete selection if all sets intersect. So I mean, it's... So that's why I drew it in such a way that they are disjointed. But discrete selectivity, it's a specific property in many spaces that doesn't take place in some important places of spaces. For example, we want the selection to be a closed discrete subset. But if we take a countable compact space, for example, it doesn't have infinite closed discrete subsets. So there will be plenty of sequences in which there are no such selections. But for example, it's not so immediate, but easy, that if we have a crowded first countable space, so it's easy to choose a sequence of open sets that converges to a point, and they are disjointed. And then, whatever points we take in each of them, the respective selection will converge to the point x, so it will never be closed and discrete. So again, good spaces, like first countable ones with some non-isolated points, don't have this property. And, well, but this property becomes interesting in function spaces, which in most cases have no isolated point. So let me firstly some trivial properties of discrete selectivity. For example, low-infinite countable compact space is discrete and selective. And this is because in such a space you can choose disjoint family of open sets, and this disjoint family must have... cannot have a closed discrete selection, because that closed discrete set will be infinite, because the family is disjointed. So it's absolutely trivial. First countable... a first countable space is discrete and selective even though it is discrete. So again, that picture I drew, the diagram of our first countable space is practically proofing, because we can find a convergent sequence of open sets, a sequence of open sets converging to a point. And if a space is discrete and selective, then any open subset of X is discrete and selective. This is also trivial, because a sequence of open subset of that... or subsets of that subspace will be a sequence of open sets in the whole space. So if we have a closed discrete selection in the whole space, it will be closed and discrete in the subspace, so it's trivial. It requires a little bit of work, but not difficult, that if you have an infinite compact space and a first countable space, then their product is not discrete and selective. And discrete selectivity is preserved by closed continuous subjective maps. So it is again more or less straightforward. So these are the general properties of discretely selective spaces. And I think this theorem is a nice justification of the term itself, because it turns out that for any uncountable space X, CP of X is discrete and selective. And of course, it cannot be discrete and selective if X is countable, because then CP of X is second countable, and hence first countable. It has no isolated points, so the previous proposition works, and CP of X cannot be discrete and selective. So in function spaces, this property is quite common. For any uncountable space X, we have it in CP of X. But... so this is all one thing for all. But how about CP of X to I, where I is the unit segment in some space of R? So it's not so easy to answer this question for the spaces of bounded functions. Because, for example, if X is discrete, then CP of X_I) will be in compact, so it won't be discrete and selective. Remember that even uncountably compact... uncountably compact infinite spaces are not discrete and selective. So... but CP of X_I) can even be compact. So it's not such a trivial question. And, well, let me show what can we do about it. So I have this concept, which I guess is also new. So say that a set A in X is inessential. If one of the two following properties hold: outside of A, we can have an infinite set B whose cluster point is also outside of A. So outside of A, we want an infinite set with a cluster point also outside of A. Or there exists two countably infinite disjoint subsets B and C of the complement of A, such that they have a common cluster point. And the common cluster point can be inside A, this doesn't matter. We want the set B and C to be disjointed and to have a common cluster point, but it doesn't matter where it is. So this is very technical, of course, seems to be just... how could it be good for something, but you will see that it's good. It is good for the discrete selectivity of function space. So a space is essentially uncountable if any countable subset of X is inessential. So it must be uncountable in the first place, because there is something outside of a countable set. So what...
Vladimir.
Let us look.
Do you mean the cluster point, or literally outside of B? If A has closure, why does B have a cluster point?
Yes, B, yes. And for example, here I want the cluster point to be outside of A.
And B. It's there exists, so...
Let me see, let me see, let me see.
There exists a B, so you...
Maybe I'm not saying well... No, no, I mean, the definition is already... Yeah, yeah, cluster point outside of B, you're right.
You can shrink, you can shrink, but you still have the product.
Yeah. Okay, I was calling cluster point, but you are right, but the cluster points could also be in B. Anyway, these are the conditions, which mean... So, okay. So... so essential and countable spaces must be uncountable. But for example, if we take a discrete space, whatever cardinality it has, it's not essential and countable, because whatever set you take outside... whatever you take outside a set, it has no cluster points. Now, all sets are closed, you don't have points in it. Is closure of B minus B. Okay, but let us see what essential uncountability has to do with discrete selectivity of function spaces. So again, let me list the trivial properties of inessential sets and the respective essential and countable spaces. So if a set A is inessential, then its policy is also inessential. This is absolutely trivial. If some subset of X is essentially uncountable, then any bigger space is essential and countable, this is also trivial. Now, if for any countable set A in X there exists a countably compact infinite subspace in the complement, then X is essentially uncountable. Basically, because in this countably compact set you have a cluster point. You can choose a cluster point for some infinite set. If for any countable set A in X there is an infinite set in the complement whose closure is compact and metrizable, then you can easily choose a convergent sequence outside and split it into two parts. So it will be two infinite sets, countably infinite sets, that share cluster points. If the tightness of X is countable and for any countable subset A in X, the complement is not discrete, then X is essentially uncountable. Well, if the complement is not discrete, some point is not isolated, so there is some countable set that touches that point. And finally, if X is essential and countable and B weakens the topology of X, then the resulting topology is also essentially uncountable. And of course, all spaces are assumed to be tickened. Maybe some results hold for wider classes of spaces, but for this topic is about ticked. Whatever is written in my talk is for ticked spaces. So the following result shows why essential uncountability is important. So if X is essential and countable, then CP of X_I) is discrete and selective. So that's why I invented this notion. It implies discrete selectivity of the function space of other spaces, the space of bounded functions. We will see later that the converse is not true, but sometimes this can even be equivalent. So, well, some temporary concept, which is due, as I think, also, but anyway. So say that a sequence u_n of non-empty open subsets of X has a disjoint shrinking. If for every n we can choose a smaller set V_n in U_n, non-empty, open, such that the set V_n, the family, the sequence of V_n is disjointed. And again, it's a very specific property, and it doesn't hold for many spaces. For Real line, for example, it doesn't hold. So if, actually, if X has countable fiber length and u_n is its fiber length, then in many cases, the family U won't have a disjoint shrinking. In discrete spaces, yes, it will, but... But for example, so if we have a crowded... Crowded means has no isolated point. So if you have a crowded space of countable fiber length, then there is a sequence u_n of non-empty open subsets of X that admits no disjoint shrinking. And this will have... this property of having disjoint shrinkings will help to prove some results about discrete selectivity. So the property, again, the property of having a disjoint shrinking works well in function spaces. So if X is uncountable, then any... either both in CP of X and CP of X_I), any sequence of non-empty open subsets has disjoint shrinking. And this is actually is equivalent to the fact that X is uncountable. And why this notion for this proposition? That if we have a continuous subjective open map, the space Y is discrete and selective, and every sequence of Y has a disjoint shrinking, then X is also discrete and selective. We could view this as the fact that discretely selective spaces are big, and if something maps onto a big space, it is also big. But it's only true if that big space has this property of disjoint shrinkings. So it's possible to give counterexamples, but again, it's sort of outside of the topic, so I'll keep speaking about function spaces and discrete selectivity. So suppose that X is a normal space, and F is a closed subspace of X. So if CP_F_I) is discrete and selective, then so is CP of X_I). Well, by normality, the whole function space maps only onto this space. And since we have this property of disjoint shrinking in this space, we can be sure that CP of X is also big, so it is discrete and selective. And the following theorem is the main result of this talk: that any uncountable Lindelof sigma space is essentially uncountable. This is not trivial even for compact space. Actually, all difficulty, well, let me say 80% of the difficulty of the proof is precisely to prove it for compact spaces. So that every compact space is essentially uncountable. And this, the proof can be modified respectively to establish this for Lindelof sigma spaces. Well, let me just say that a space is Lindelof sigma if it's a continuous image of another space which can be mapped perfectly onto a second countable one. So if you take a perfect preimage of a second countable space, this is called Lindelof P-space, P small, lowercase. And it's... Continuous images of such spaces are called Lindelof sigma spaces. So any uncountable Lindelof sigma space is essentially uncountable, and hence its function space has this property. So if we have... Because essential uncountability of any space implies this discrete selectivity of the function space. So if X is an uncountable Lindelof sigma space, then CP of X_I) is discrete and selective. And, well, I'm keeping... I will continue speaking about discrete selectivity in function spaces. So it's a standalone proposition that if CP... Well, here epsilon is the Heuett-Real compactification of X. So if CP, function space of Heuett-Real compactification of X, is discrete and selective, then function space of X, the respective function space of X, is discrete and selective. And this helps to prove this result, that if X is a huge compact space, then CP of X in 0, 1 is discrete and selective. So it's sort of perpendicular notion. You see, Lindelof pseudo-compact space must be compact, so we have a lot of... We covered a lot of spaces by the class of Lindelof sigma spaces, but it turns out that for pseudo-compact spaces, we also have this proper discrete selectivity in the function space. Now, let us look at P capital space. P capital space means all G delta subsets are open in this space X, and it's very opposite of pseudo-compact space, evidently, the notion. And besides, the function space P of X_I) is countable and compact for P-space. That's why we have the following proposition. So if X is a P-space, then CP of X_I) is not discrete and selective, because it's countably compact and infinite. So it cannot be discrete and selective. It doesn't have infinite closed discrete subsets. And, well, I already mentioned that discrete selectivity of CP of X_I) does not imply in general that X is essential and countable. But there is another result showing that that we have nice relationship between these notions. So omega-manalistic means closure of every countable set has a countable net. So if we have an omega-manalistic space X of countable tightness, then the following conditions are equivalent: X is essential and countable, CP of X is discrete and selective. So in this class, these two notions just coincide. But for A, I mean, like that you... If X is essential and countable, this is discrete and selective. This implication is for any space, but vice versa, for omega-manalistic spaces of countable tightness. And then the technical properties that closure of closed discrete such places must be uncountable. This is equivalent to this condition. So for some classes, which are not bad at all, we have an equivalence of essential uncountability of X and discrete selectivity of CP of X_I). And this is not trivial even for metrizable spaces. So if we ask, if we ask how about CP of X_I) for a metrizable space, must it be essential and countable? It's not so evident, because a metrizable space can be discrete, for example. Then CP of X is compact, so it's not essential and countable. But if we take some, like compact, for example, a compact metric space, then by one of the previous theorems about Lindelof sigma, we can see that CP of X_I) is discrete and selective. So I mean, for metrizable spaces, it's not so evident, but at least it's essential and... metrizable space is essential and countable even though CP of X_I) is discrete and selective. And if you look at Lindelof... Well, we had omega-manalistic spaces of countable tightness. Recall that in this class, essential uncountability is equivalent to the discrete selectivity of the function space. If we add Lindelof, the Lindelof property, then uncountable... If you take an uncountable Lindelof space, then omega-manalistic space of countable tightness, then X is essentially uncountable. This is because if we have an uncountable space, then CP of X must be discrete and selective. This should be proved using the third property, that property about closed discrete such spaces. And if X is uncountable, CP of X is a Lindelof sigma space, then X is essentially uncountable, and hence CP of X_I) is discrete and selective. So we do not say X is Lindelof sigma. But, well, there is a very... There is a famous, non-trivial theorem of Ogleman that Lindelof sigma property in CP of X implies that the Heuett-Real compactification of X is Lindelof sigma. So we can apply previous results. So it's essential and countable, the respective CP is discrete and selective. So we can... So this also... If CP of X is Lindelof sigma space, then CP of X_I) is discrete and selective. And it's time for examples. So if you look at one point gentrification of an uncountable space, then it's Lindelof P-space, so CP of L_I) is not discrete and selective by proposition... What? What? This is fifteen? It's this one? Ah, yeah. So because for P-spaces, CP of X_I) is not discrete and selective. So the sigma... This example shows what? That the sigma property of the space X cannot be meted in corollary 12. Corollary 12 says that if X is Lindelof sigma space, then its function space is discrete and selective. So we omit sigma property, we omit Lindelof property, and we don't have discrete selectivity. And condition, the condition of... Again, this space is omega-manalistic, but not essential and countable, because of all countable subsets are closed. So the tightness condition in corollary 11 cannot be... Countable tightness here cannot be meted. The next example is Shachmatov example. The space X such that CP of X_I) is pseudo-compact, and the space X is also pseudo-compact. So by one of the previous theorem, CP of X-Y is discrete and selective. So what do we have here? We cannot have discrete selectivity for countable compact spaces or function spaces, but we can have discrete selectivity for pseudo-compact function space. So this is what is shown by this example. Besides... Besides, CP of X is discrecally selective, but X is not essential and countable because countable sets in X are closed. So so it's, it's not equivalent. We saw that in omega monolithic spaces of countable tightness, essential accountability is, is equivalent of X is equivalent to discrecality of CP of X i. But in general, it is not. That's what is shown by this example. And if we take the Movka space, so E is the set of countable dense subset of isolated points, D, D is closed discrete, X is pseudo-compact, then CP of X is discrecally selective because X is pseudo-compact. But that condition C of theorem sixteen, well, this, this condition C, which is equivalent to essential uncountability in this class of spaces, in general, is what, doesn't imply A and B, doesn't imply A R. So that was this example showed. And well, I think, I think these results show that the notion is interesting and still there are problems about this notion. So for example, if we, instead of, if we just leave Lindelofness and countable tightness, it's not clear whether whether X must be essential and countable. Again, these notions are not equivalent. So we could ask for Lindelof space of countable tightness, whether CP of X i is discrecally selective. And here it's not even clear if we take Lindelof first countable space and ask whether CP of X i is discrecally selective. Or again, Lindelof first countable space, whether this space is essential and countable. This is strong to ask. If, if it's essential and countable, then CP of X will be discrecally selective. And suppose that X is an uncountable space. Suppose that CP of X is Lindelof. Must this be discrecally selective? Well, one of the previous results shows that if CP of X is Lindelof sigma, the answer is yes. So how about meeting the sigma property and just assuming CP of X is Lindelof? Must in this case CP of X i be discrecally selective? And again, what, this was proved for normal spaces X and closed subsets subsets Y. If, if smaller, for a smaller, for a subspace, CP of X y is discrecally selective, must CP of X i be discrecally selective? I proved this, yes. Ah, yeah, okay. But thirty minutes isn't, oh, it's twenty, twenty, I thought I have two minutes.
That, that part is behind.
Ah, okay, okay, sure, okay. So well, let me, let me omit the rest of the problems, just.
Are there any questions?
About problem three, you take X, just the Zorkin Frey line.
Problem three, it's easy. So you take the Zorkin Frey line and... I can't answer that offhand, I don't know.
Any other questions? All right, let's thank the speaker again. And the next talk will be in about one minute.
When you do the set operation, you do intersection, you do union, why not? You need restrict it to the type. Instead of everything messed up, right? Everything mixed together. You do all in a set, end up choosing a section. So here is it. After you assign type to open set, then when you do operations of open set, you can restrict to certain types. For that, you can study a neighborhood system of certain types. Start a closure operation of certain types. Of course, connectivity, right? Certain types. And mapping even. And after you do that, there's a question here come up, that's this. Right, statistics, right? There's a slide in there. Nonetheless, you cannot live without statistics. What I thought is that when I can include this room, the whole series is here, right? Statistics. You work on the whole, always you see statistics everywhere, everywhere. Tutor, you know, right? Everywhere. Yes? Here, we will have statistics junkie. So let me show how we do this in here. So let's define. Now first off, let's say we start with the partial order set P, alright? And also a topological space. Of course, X, both P and X are finite. And we will generate a so-called free distributive lattice by P and X. So basically, P is a type, alright? And X, you don't know the type, but X type is kind of like point in X also. Consider as a type. And together, we generate a free distributive lattice there. So just like a number in the level there, right? So for example, my, me is X. So X, right? My is a type. And right neighbor is a type. Together, two types there, right? Together, you can define open set. All right neighbors are mine. That's open set. My neighbor over there, beginning said that's B, right? And these right neighbors that we open all set, including me, right? If just me, my neighbors, well, not including me, for example. Of course, you can define including me most way. But you can see, that's a way to define open set. So together, we generate a so-called free distributive lattice, alright? And then we will assign type to the topology. We do a so-called type mapping sigma there. From the topology to the lattice there. So satisfy this precondition. First off, the type of open set is zero. Of course, that's bounded, alright? That is, a bounded means when you have a minimal, smallest element, you have biggest element. Small element is zero, biggest element is one, alright? And yet, and only that's empty set. And also, the type will not be one, okay? And the second condition is the essential condition here say, well, if your set U is a subset of B, then we will be sure the type of U is less than or equal to V, alright? So we do that because when you have type, you do join, right? Join. A type P1 join P2. So then, in order relationship, that type will be one. It will be smaller in the order, right? So in other words, when the set is smaller, it will carry more information. Or in other words, you have to have more information in order to define a small open set. If a big set, well, you can just use a less formal made of describing. So that's idea, say, well, if you do that, you can get this. And together, put this thing together, five, 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 right? It's called a type topology space. So that's what I'm trying to say, alright? Definition. Let's try example, some example there. Suppose example, I used some mathematics, the generalology there. And basically, this paper is written for the memory of Wiscomb. That's why I did name it. Yeah, I used an example there, right? So that's from the online resource. They say, right now, they collect this many mathematicians, right? In the big human history. Now, let's, let X be the set of all this mathematician in this layer. And we want to find a type of topology of X. So we do P, the partial order set here will be just two elements. One is ancestor, one is descendant. A two, two element there. And then, you can see, for each mathematician X, we will, remember, we have X there, right? We will have X, Xs, and not Xs together. So we define a set there. Together, that's ancestor, that L0 means that the lattice for generate the distribute that is there. So this is not lattice yet. Define L0, that's ancestor, descendant, and all those elements. All this thing is X in X. So use L0 to generate a free lattice. I mentioned earlier, that's LTX there. And then, we, of course, there is semantics of X, right? That means P, P is all those. So we define open set in that. For example, my, X is me, right? And so then, we can define open set, my ancestor, right? Define open set. So you can see, I actually did a little tracing. I can trace up ancestor, right? To like a 20 generation there. So normally, it's there, I just skip the, somehow, just a bit, skip a lot. Use the dots there, so I just go back to the fourth generation. So the first generation, my ancestor is Wiscomb there, right? So there, and the next generation, next generation is Hewitt. Go in there. And the whole, if we take, take into it, you will see that all great name there. You know, honestly, I'm a little bit scared when I do that. So look like I'm related to those, but people are there, you know, kind of. And that's me define open set there. And of course, we can define for this, for any student of Wiscomb, we can define the same open set, right? Same way. And of course, in that way, they will be the same. Open set, they equal. And similarly, we can define open set, Wiscomb's ancestor, same way, right? But in that way, let's say, in this case, we will not include himself in there. And for the ultimate descendant, you can define the same way, right? My descendant, of course, in that case, are empty set. And for Wiscomb, the descendant, if you go online, search it, they said they have 91 names, alright, there. Including me there, right? And you can see that the good representation there. And the type mapping, now, for this open set, alright? My, right? Ancestor, this open set. The type, if we map a type to this. So first of my, second ancestor, and so that's important, alright? So all X, X is the descendant of Wiscomb, together, including me, together. And my descendant, my descendant in the open set, alright? In that case, that's empty set, right? I need to rewrite this one, should be, should be zero there, right? For example, let's say, Wiscomb there. So in that case, everyone, Wiscomb, descendant, and all X, X is the ancestor of Wiscomb. Type mapping, you want to satisfy the certain condition of the type mapping, alright? So you can see that, in that way, you have a type topology space. And this is the next example that I mentioned earlier, say, American neighborhood there. So you have several street, and on the street, you have veteran. And then, in this case, our P will be, on order set, that's including five street names. And then also, two more property, two more type, that's one. One is left neighbor, the other is right neighbor there. Then we can define, say, X, right? Street name, left neighbor, and then right neighbor. Define open set in the same way. So then, each open set will automatically have a type, alright? And you can see, when you ignore the type, you do the intersection, you go to see there, you get the isolated point everywhere, right? Everywhere almost. But if you restrict to type, for example, you only work on open set that involve right neighbors, but not left neighbors, you can see the closure of each singleton will be what? Will be all, the set of all left neighbors, right? It's not, it's not itself, right? Including the all left neighbors. Similarly, if you just use a type as right neighbor, a left neighbor, but not, not right neighbor, you will see that the set, the closure of me, alright? And a singleton will be all my right neighbors. So you can see that there will make a difference there. Otherwise, that's just, when you take closure of me, that's just myself. Now, that suggests, well, suggest, the previous slides suggest, say, well, when you study those set operation there, especially the open set operation there, you better restrict to types, right? Now, before we do that, let's introduce some concept that's important for us to, for the rest of them. Then first off, we say, in the lattice, lattice there, you go see the element look like a, can be like a P1 conjunct P2, right? Or P1 disjunct P2, you know, element like that. So then, you can, you can talk about element there. They can call join irreducible, that means what? You cannot write the element as the disjunction of two other element. So here's similar example in the set. So basically, say, you cannot write as, a set cannot be written as the union of two other set of related type. So here's the definition, say, a set U is called P join irreducible. Of course, P is type there, right? First off, that set is not empty. Second, that set, the type of that set is above P. And then furthermore, when you, you write as W, you will be for some, you will be there. And both of you be the types above P, then you must have one of them equal. You must equal one of them. In other words, you cannot be written as the union of two other type, a two other open set of same type. And similarly, meet irreducible, you can define same way. And furthermore, we will define a so-called strictly type. So that just say, when you have a set, you, you the proper subset of B, then the type, okay, backwards. The type of U is strictly less than B. I need to switch this, alright, backwards. I will change it, but my name is still there. The strictly type. So the proper open set will have a different type. The type will be different, cannot be the same. So then, the first sense we can prove is that in a strictly type topology space, and every open set U is sigma U join irreducible. I mean, the type of U is sigma U, right? And then, that open set cannot be written as the union of two open set, alright? The first of the, the type of both open set is above P, above sigma. Cannot, cannot include them. And from here, we can define a concept, like I said, all open set, the type is above P, alright? And also, define open set, the type is above P, and furthermore, that is by P join irreducible, alright? And of course, we can define neighborhood system in that, right? For, it's called X in that. And then, you can see, every open set whose type is above P, will be with join of some element from the, join, P join irreducible open set. That's, that kind of a theorem, you can prove it using induction there. And we talked about above P, the type open set whose type above P, right? But you can see, above P means you will be able to do disjunction with any other type, right? Lots of type there. That will make you to mix up the type, like a left neighbor, right neighbor, right? If you want only study open set involve left neighbor, but not right neighbor. And you can see that, that kind of a above P type, that is easily more right neighbor, right? Because it is disjunction, you can disjunction anything, right? We're always above left neighbor. For example, P is a neighbor. Then left neighbor disjunct right neighbor, that's always above left neighbor. Now, how do we restrict that kind of situation? You say, we still want to limit the type. Don't want all kind of type messed up together. Here, we will go there to consider so-called chain of types. So let's say, you have a type, a chain, you want, P7, P1, PK minus 1, a chain of types, alright? And then, we want to find open set, for this, the chain, that means only if the type of open set sigma is sitting between the sequence, alright? In between, not above, not above P, K minus 1. Not outside the sequence. Only between. So then, let you to limit the, your open set to even a narrower collection, instead of lots of things there. And then, of course, you can define the join irreducible open set there, right? J C. So you can see, now, those open set, the type is sitting between the chain. And furthermore, that is a join, P I join irreducible for some I, alright? And from there, we can, we can quickly to, quickly show that this will be neighborhood base of this neighborhood system, T C, neighborhood system. So now, this every open set here will be where you from, where you from there. So I mean, you can throw away the disjunction, alright? That's the neighborhood of open set that above P, whose type above P. Now, how about the whose type of open set whose type is below P? Well, you can see, that's the same consideration come here, right? You can evolve all kind, all kind of type there. Because you have type P, now you have type Q, you do conjunction. Of course, G conjunct P, G conjunct Q will be what? Will be less than P, right? Will be below P. That means evolve all kind of type. Now, how do you restrict, say, I only evolve this type? I will exclude those type. Like example, say, I only can see starting the level, right? Left level. I want to exclude the right level. How do we do that? So we will introduce a new concept called P type, alright? So let's say, now, P is not the element from the free lattice there. That P is just from, from partial order set P. And a chain of type, alright, is called P chain. If each type in the chain is inside these three lattice, then this bracket lattice will only use P. We, we use the P for the generation, what's it? What time is over, sir?
She'll finish up in like one minute.
Okay. So basically, the idea, they say, you restrict type, and you restrict open set, you do the rest of them, right? From there, you can start a closure, and this key, and this key will be nicer. You have some kind of nice result there. Let me write it all there. And then, and suddenly, you can define a connectedness, that you, a set is connect, restricted to the chain, right? And only if that opens, cannot be separated by open set from that chain part there. And then, from there, you can see, that's something there, right? I just skipped that one of them. Can see, that's the last part there. Say, you can go there to start a connected set. The connected set only restrict the certain I. And then, you will, what the whole string in that connection, right? On neighborhood, say, you and somebody else, a classmate, right? Now, how, how strong is your relationship, right? Like here, say, naturally, we can use statistics come here, alright? So you can see, when you feel type, you can start a sampling, sample standard iteration of P. In that way, so that's a P chain, you know, or former set, right? Set of numbers. Now, when you have a set of numbers, statistics, statistics, right? Naturally. And then, you can see, there are meaning there, right? This score of a particular type, right? There are meaning there, alright? Whenever on the street, say, the people live on one end of the street, that would have, that would have a higher, let's say, Z score if you, if you restrict the type to the just left neighbor, right? Highest score, because that means that it has more right neighbor than anyone else, alright? So the type there. And of course, all kind of ways to define the statistics here. You can see that, that's another type. We define even, define a type, statistics for point. So each point is in the space. Now, I have some statistics, statistics in there, alright? Define a point here. So basically, that point evolve in many open set, types of open set. Like if that evolve more types of open set, that means what? That point is, okay, move there, let me stop here, okay?
Are there any questions? Okay, let's thank the speaker once again. The next talk is in two minutes. Our next speaker is Gary Prosser. Title of this conference, PiBase, A Usable Map of the Forest.
Alright, thank you very much, Gary, for, and the organizers for giving me this opportunity to... Oh, you can't see what I see, so I should probably fix that first. Let's see here. Alright. If you notice, we got this video. Alright. So, hey, first of all, someone made the mistake of giving me a soapbox. So let me just say, I've been livestreaming. I say hi, that's a very generous, not generous thing to say. Sam and Cody, my students at South, have been superstars, except they can't spell my first name. Ooh, Cody. That's alright, it's a V, guys. They've been, they've been great, though, helping me get this thing livestreamed. If you saw any talks that you liked, that were in this room or any of the plenaries, with a couple of exceptions, we've recorded those. We put these online. It is actually super easy to do. You already own a laptop, probably. So if you got a video camera, and then there's this little, one little device here that I had to get, it's actually really easy to do. I'd really love to see a lot more of our research activity recorded for those poor souls like me who can't drive the three hours to Auburn for a weekly Set Direct Topology seminar. And I'm sure it's awesome, and I would love to be able to see it more often. Let me, let's talk. But hey, that's not what I was invited here to say, so I should say no more. What I am here to talk about is PiBase. So let me just pull up some slides right here. And we'll just go ahead and do it like this. So PiBase, A Usable Map of the Forest. And I should say that this is joint work with James Dabs, and that's also not very generous to me, because it's, the PiBase is his application. I've been happy that he's been willing to work with me on doing some things with it. And I've done a little bit, I guess, to contribute. But I think that this could be a really cool tool for us as researchers. And let me talk about that. So first things first. No, I want to edit, please. That's what I want. You will throw me out of here if I don't actually talk about actual research. So let me just ask you this question, or I should say, Gary's question. Are all strategically selectively separable spaces Markov selectively separable? I won't go into the details on those, other than to say that they are, of course, selection properties. And I was able to make some, you know, possible headway on this. Turns out that, sure, if there exists some, a space with certain properties that perhaps we're more familiar with, T three and a half, strategically Menger, submatrisizable, subseparable. And by both of those, I mean, they are refinements of topologies that are matrisizable and separable. But it cannot be sigma compact. As it turns out, sigma compact is equivalent for regular spaces to be Markov Menger. And turns out that if you take the CP of this space, all this stuff translates from Menger into selectively separable. That's where the subseparable comes in. So can you sort of see? Yes, you can see behind me the question, which is, where can we begin checking if such a space already exists in the literature? And well, we are at Auburn University, which means if I just kind of walk around, oh. You're gonna find this just lying around somewhere here. This is a great book, Counterexamples in Topology by Stein and Seebok. This is a great reference, you know, back in 1967, there was this NSF REU. And if you, if you read the preface, if I can find this here, they talk about those students. Do any of you know Gary Greenhog? Wonder what became of that guy? So these students with Stein and Seebok did an excellent job. They collected about 143 spaces. I say ish, because some of them are really space schemas, which you could argue that that's way more than 140 or less, depending on how specific you want to be in what is a space. And these have proofs, you know, you open it up, it's this great, you know, great organized thing. And then, oh, I gotta really show you this thing, right here. I'm gonna put this on the cam. Oh, you gotta, you can't see that, I want to do this maybe. It's easier, yeah, there we go. Nah, technology. This is why I have two students doing this for me. This is why I have two students doing this for me instead of trying to do it all myself. So here I am, make me a little bit bigger. Try to look at me on the internet. So in the back of this book, there is this excellent index where you can see, um, all these properties. And each number, each space is given a specific number here. And if you have a straight edge, you can kind of like do this number right here and, um, okay, here we go. Lindelof, uh, one, sigma compact is zero. So we go off to the top here, oh, we need another straight edge. Um, but one of these numbers here, maybe if I, you know, was not trying to do this in the middle of the air, I could figure out which space is, you know, Lindelof, but not sigma compact. Um, so that's, that's great. And, um, and I've, I've always read, you know, Mary Ellen Rude is someone I've only been able to, to know by reputation. Um, and she has an ex, if, if you're a fan of this book like I am, um, hold on. Let me make sure I put the slides back up. If you're a fan of this book like I am, uh, her review of it is excellent. And there's, there was this, a couple of sentences that really, um, uh, stuck with me. And I paraphrased them here. "Topology is a dense forest of counterexamples. A usable map of the forest is a fine thing." So, um, oh yeah, the question was, uh, T three and a half strategically Menger. So I'm just gonna look this up here and then, uh, wait a second. I can't find strategically Menger, subseparable, or submatrisizable in this book. And that's because, well, uh, 1967 was years ago. And, uh, I don't think anybody was gonna figure it out, that, that exact number in their heads at this conference. But, uh, it was a while back and that's, I think, what is important here. Um, all right, so I guess, you know, I'm gonna have to do some math. No, wait, before I get, before I have to do some math, I get one more tool up my sleeve. And this is the PyBase. This is the thing that James Dabs has been working on since he was in graduate school. He was also Gary's student. Uh, he did defect in the real world, but we will forgive you as long as you keep developing this wonderful website, I think. Um, credit is due also, in addition to, to James, I want to thank a couple of folks. Scott Baragona, um, and also in grad school. I think he tried to get me to help, but I wouldn't help with the data entry. Uh, I was busy. Um, but Scott was, was a champ and he, uh, put a lot of the results in there. And then my student Cody, um, has, I got a small grant. And I should, I should say that this is, uh, only, we've only been able to get where we are now due to a, uh, support of my own university. There was a Faculty Development Council grant, small grant, gave me a little bit money to, to trick Cody into working with me, pay him peanuts and he goes through. And he hadn't taken topology yet at the time, but he was able to go through here and, you know, at least do data entry for me. And now, and now he's been doing undergraduate research with me. And so I think that's, that's fun. We'll talk more about that in just a moment. Um, let's see, and it has lots of these results already in there. We actually just add some features which helps us discover that we are missing a little bit. But that's okay, we now have more features that will let us add it to the database even quicker. Um, several other spaces and theorems have been added, uh, that aren't in counterexamples. It was for a long time basically a wiki interface. It was a little bit smarter than a wiki. We'll show you some of the great features it has. Um, but it's been, oh, it's been online for a while. Um, I got someone like embarrassingly gushing to me how much they love my site. I was like, it's not my site, it's James. You should be yushing at him, he's not married. Anyway, in any case, um, yeah, it, 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 it's, it's, it's pretty popular on the internet. Um, you know, if you go to math.stackexchange, um, you know, in fact, if you Google, "What is an example of a normal non-matrisable space?", uh, it'll show up this stack exchange question. And they'll be like, "Here's about, uh, you know, 20." And it's really easy to just search this website and they're there. Uh, and so that's great. And I know some of you are like, "Oh my goodness, my, my IBL topology course." We'll talk about that, but we have, we have some ideas there. So, uh, hey, let's, let's try it out. Let's run a search on pybase.org. And you can, uh, pull this, uh, up on your phones now, except that the, the, the cutting edge, bleeding edge version is not live just yet. So you're gonna have to remind, it's viewer?
Viewer dot, yeah.
Oh, hey, that's it autocomplete, awesome. And so now there's actually a login function here. Let's see. And good, I'm already logged into GitHub, so I don't have to, uh, actually put in credentials. So I'm already, I'm, I'm ready to go here. Um, okay, so let's just go ahead and, uh, let's just run a search. Maybe, maybe I'll get lucky, maybe we've already got the PyBase, the information that we need. So what did I say? I wanted T three and a half. Let me make sure this is, this is still on the internet. Let me make this a little bit bigger for them. Great. So it's T three and a half. Um, it needs to be strategically Menger. Sigma, not sigma compact. Okay, excellent. So we have, we have an example of that, but then let's, let's keep going here. So let's add, um, we want it to be submatrisable. Okay, we got a problem here. It's trying to autocomplete it to what it actually knows about. Matrisable, locally matrisable, nothing about submatrisable yet. I mean, that's a monkers, that really shouldn't be there. Oh, we could fix that. So first things first, I am on the, uh, the public branch that everyone can use. Let me get to something where I can edit, um, because I can't just edit the, the, the public version. We'll talk about that. Uh, instead, okay, we need to add this new property, this fancy property about submatrisable. Let me, submatrisable. It refines a matrisable topology. Save that. Okay, great. Um, well, that, and we're gonna ignore the subseparable bit, uh, for, for now. But if I was serious about going through this, I would also add subseparable. But let's just take, we have this new property, submatrisable. And thank goodness, the computers haven't put us out of the job yet. It does, it cannot just start proving whether things are submatrisable or not. Uh, it's not that smart, um, but it can do some things for me. Uh, obviously if I'm matrisable, then I'm going to be submatrisable. Save that. And then, uh, oh, I happen to know that submatrisable implies G delta. So I need to add that G delta property. I don't think that's in there yet. Uh, G delta diagonal, I should say. Go ahead and add that. And let's add a theorem that submatrisable implies G delta diagonal. And one more theorem. G delta diagonal implies Hausdorff, just because it knows about matrisable spaces and Hausdorff spaces. So, um, that will automatically allow us, if I go back to the spaces now, go back to the search. I had trouble finding, it still wants matrisable, remember that from earlier. But now if I, oops, compact, oops. Submatri, here we go. Uh, oh, wait, no, it still doesn't, uh, well, actually, the only matrisable, submatrisable spaces it knows at this point, right, are the matrisable ones. That's all I've told it. And, uh, I happen to know that if you are strategically Menger and matrisable, you are sigma compact. And so obviously that would be a contradiction. If anything did show up, I would have been very embarrassed. Uh, so instead, what we'll do here is we'll stick a, uh, is it a question mark that we decide? Question mark, oh, front, okay, awesome. And so now it, it, it's gonna be a little bit looser about the requirements. It's going to say, "I just want to take a look at the, uh, spaces that might fulfill these properties." And, uh, here's one that I happen to know a little bit about, the one-point Lindelofication. Uh, we heard about this earlier, I think, about the first uncountable cardinal ordinal. Um, you can already see, we're gonna talk about bug fixes. I might need to, it was refreshing mistake?
Yes, it was.
It was a mistake?
You're not on your branch anymore.
Ah, okay.
Beta software.
Beta software. I was like, all right, so let's go ahead and get back in the development branch. It does remember that though, right?
You, you, you need to switch back to your branch if you're gonna assert a trade.
Right, so but it still remembers in this, yeah, still have G delta diagonal. Woo, okay, I was almost imbeciles. So one-point Lindelofication of Omega one. And so, uh, we'll have to work on the math jacks getting that to, to autocomplete a little bit better. But hey, here we are. Um, and, uh, it, it, it might work, but we don't know about submatrisability. Uh, however, um, it's not too hard to prove, um, this little fact here. The one-point Lindelofication does not have a G delta diagonal. That is false. And so, uh, save that. Okay, hey, if we look at this, uh, here, there we go. And we look at what it's able to deduce, just by telling it it does not have a G delta diagonal, ah, it is no longer submatrisable. If I return to the space search, I'm gonna have to rewrite this because I made the error of refreshing beta software. Um, if I search for T three and a half, I need strategically Menger. I need not, uh, sigma compact. And I need submatrisable. And low and behold, you no longer see it in the search results. Um, this, this is true, but this is only true in my little made-up land of, uh, my branch. Um, I did some no-no's and, and, as, as part of this process, because one of the goals, this is, has been my contribution, is I feel really strongly that we need to have some quality control on this, right? Uh, we can't let anybody, any hacker from insert your least favorite country here, trying to get into the PyBase and telling us what we should believe about our topological spaces. Uh, we don't need that fake news on the PyBase. So instead, uh, you can do whatever you want, but it's, uh, it's only on your user branch. And we, we have a submit for review button and I'm scared to touch that one. And I don't think that one's quite working just yet, but.
It might do things.
It might do things. Let's see. Yellow.
It's not gonna be making this one here, but.
Okay, magically on the backend, let's assume everything worked perfectly, as it will, it did. And, and the next week, uh, definitely when we get this launched for you guys, hopefully very soon, it will go. And if you're familiar with Git, if you're familiar with revision control, that's what's actually powering this on the backend. It is, uh, it allows anybody to do whatever they want in their own little branch. But then when it comes time to say, "Okay, this stuff is legit. I, I, I have my sources cited and everything. Now I want to tell the world, um, we submit for review and we're, we're, we're working on, we're developing this process and how we want to, uh, review these things and then merge them back into the master branch." Okay, so that was kind of neat. I hope you agree. Um, let's, let's, we talk about something else here. This is a tool for, and I've got some time, so let's, let's tell you. This is a tool for both researchers and students. And, and I have to say, Phil Zener is not here. Well, if you ever watched this, Phil, I owe you an apology because, um, back in the day when I was an undergraduate here at Auburn, I had the opportunity to work, uh, work with, work under him. Um, and, uh, but, but I asked him, you know, before we got started, I said, Dr. Zener, I asked, uh, what's chance, I didn't really know what I was asking at the time, I was an undergraduate. It was like, what's the chance of being published, doing something worthwhile with all this work? And he said, "No, not a whole lot, you know? The, the questions that I think are interesting are hard questions. That's why I think they're interesting." Um, and that was a little bit disappointing for me. I ended up going and worked for, uh, Dr. Bestnake. And if you're watching, I love you, that was, that was a great project. Uh, but I didn't, it, it was something publishable, but I didn't solve it because it was really hard. Um, so I got some partial results on that. But anyway, I kind of regret this. Um, and so this has been kind of the bug, uh, bugging me all these years. Like, how can we better foster undergraduate research? Meaningful undergraduate research, prepare these students to go on and become, uh, the next generation of Set Direct Topologists? And, uh, I, I think the PyBase has a lot that can, that can support this. And they kind of do a lot to support us. Uh, with the PyBase, you know, you can simply run a search for, this is a, uh, outdated, um, should I put a question mark here, I guess? Can't edit it now.
That works.
Oh, that works? That's a sentence, that's what I need.
That would be not false.
Not false.
Literally not known.
Yeah, because I'm not necessarily Boolean, booleans, but yes. Uh, so not, not known basically, or not, it's not Markus' fault. Okay, um, well, we can, basically you can run this search, right? And you can find all this stuff, and I picked this one because that's actually what Cody's gonna get to do for me this summer, um, is hemi-compactness, we've been talking about a little bit in our directed reading. And, uh, there's a lot, it's not even in the PyBase yet, actually. So we'll have to get that added to the PyBase. And then there's so many results out there about hemi-compact spaces. What a great chance for a survey of the literature for an undergraduate student to go through and find all these results and put them into the PyBase. And as he puts these into the PyBase, what's gonna happen? You're gonna find these holes in the literature, things that we might, we could probably prove if you or I needed to know, uh, if a space was hemi-compact, maybe it's not hard, but it just hasn't shown up. At least we couldn't find it in the literature. What better stuff for an undergraduate student to do than to do actually a, a, an open question? You know, it may not make it into topology and its applications, but it can make it into an undergraduate, uh, level mathematics journal. And I, I think that giving them the opportunity to, to work on real open problems, even if they're, you know, propositions maybe, uh, for, for a faculty member. This will give us so much fodder for work that undergraduate students can do, uh, or even master students, you know, can, can do. And by the nature of them doing this work, they will also be helping us. They will help us fill out this database. They'll help us catch up the database to the current level of research that we have today. So, um, we have a plan for moving forward. Obviously we need to add more data, um, and we can't just start just picking up random textbooks and putting them in there. We did that once. This isn't very random, this is great to get us started. But, uh, we need to be strategic about which properties that we add. And, and that means we need to know who is on board, who can, who wants to be a part of this community that we're trying to try and build to kind of slowly get this adopted by more and more researchers as a tool to help you do the research, to take away the tedious parts of looking up the literature. And if that's you, please get in touch with me or James, uh, or talk to us, uh, you know, today, tonight or tomorrow. We'd love to talk to you more about that. Obviously we need to squash the bugs and that's another thing. You know, we're going to launch this in some capacity later this year. Uh, I don't have a date for you just yet, but when we do launch it, uh, we, we would love for you, if you, once you hit any bugs or any issues, uh, let us know and we'll be happy to fix those as quickly as we can. Uh, we, we also want to make improvements. Um, there's some great ideas that the folks have suggested to us and thought, we've thought about. Obviously, uh, well, sorry, first I'll say, it'd be great, you know, if you only care about Hausdorff spaces, that would be excellent, just be able to say, "I only care about Hausdorff spaces." And then automatically, you know, shows and hides things that make sense or don't make sense for non-Hausdorff or for Hausdorff spaces. Um, right now it only knows whether things are true or false or not listed at all. Uh, I'd love to be able to not just have, you know, uh, Lindelof, but, but, you know, uh, uh, but actually be able to say a cardinal, for every open cover, there is a cardinal-sized subcover, that sort of thing. Uh, that'd be great. Uh, the big, I think probably the big thing that I know you guys are gonna want, uh, is ZFC plus support with extra axioms. Right now we are modeling spaces in ZFC. We're obviously gonna not be able to answer all the questions about all the spaces in just ZFC. So we're gonna need to add some axiom support to that, and that is definitely on the radar. Uh, categorical relationships between spaces. I mean, the motivating question, the narrative that I'm giving you guys today involved a space X that turns into CPX that answers a question. It would be great if the PyBase could actually do that and have theorems that if X has this property, CPX has this property. Uh, that would be really elegant. Um, here's one, even if you are Gary Gruney and have this encyclopedia in your head already, um, you still might not want to sit there and write out a tic-ci diagram showing this property points to this other property. And, uh, I would love to generate that for you automatically from the PyBase. You just click this, 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 and that, and at least give you something to get started to generate that and just stick it in your, uh, your tech file and that's, you know, a couple hours saved, I hope. And then finally, I mentioned IBL topology courses. Um, yes, it means that there is, uh, if, if Stack Exchange doesn't already do this for us, uh, it, it means that it's gonna be even easier for undergraduate students who want to cheat themselves out of their education to be able to look up example, counterexamples. Um, we can't outrun this. If I don't do, if James doesn't do it, uh, somebody's going to. Uh, but what I can do is, I, I would love to see, you want to teach a class about certain properties, certain spaces? Just check the ones you care about and, uh, hit a button. It generates new names for all these things, so you can actually call them slightly different things. Uh, and so they can't even look it up online, they, they just have the definition, you know, as property XYZ, you know? Uh, you could do it that way if you, if you want, or, or, you know, we might, you could keep the original names if you want. Uh, this is something that I think would be really powerful to be able to generate. And also slightly change your IBL course from semester to semester, uh, so you can't have people sharing proofs as was mentioned during last night's EAF workshop. And then finally, uh, we want to work with journals and other partners. Uh, we want to cut, reflect the cutting edge of peer-reviewed research. We have some, you know, we have some work to do to get up to that. But I think once we get up to that point, we would love to be at, at the front lines and as things get peer-reviewed, we're not in the business of peer-review ourselves. This is why we want to reflect the peer-reviewed research. But if you, uh, have a, a relationship with a journal, uh, and you want to work with us and find ways to kind of enhance your readers' experience, uh, learning about topology from your journal, I, I would love to, to chat some more about ways we can work for, uh, work together. Uh, the other thing I guess is also, of course, funding would also be a lovely thing. Uh, there's, the NSF loves cyber infrastructure, but it's all focused on high-performance computing. We don't need a supercomputer to run the PyBase. That's not the problem. It's a community, it's a, it's a, it's a people problem and just the getting our data out of these paywall-blocked PDFs and putting them into a format that we can easily access and share with one another. And folks, that is, I've talked too long, so thank you very much. Uh, and if you have any questions.
Questions?
Yeah?
What about references and/or proofs?
Ah, so, uh, references, uh, this is, let's see if I can go back to here and if I make a new property. So one of the things that we're, we're gonna require, we don't have, right now we're just sticking into the description.
You go up to get re-co- it's got.
Oh, yeah, hey, here. So here's the backend here. Um, and it's all open source, I should say, both the code and the data is open source. Um, and, and improperly licensed and everything. But if we go like to a, a space here, this is part of what Cody did for us, is he went in and.
You want to be on the audit branch.
I do want to be on the audit branch, thank you. That no longer exists in the audit branch.
That's correct.
So. So, have people on the internet see this? Yes, they can. Alright, so if we go to a property, we need to expose more of this on the user interface, obviously, but let me just look at the role, that's a little better, actually. So you have, you know, we actually have like aliases for different names, that's another thing, you know, I can't even remember what the example was, but there's like, Gary and Paul have defined different notions of, what was it, what's some sort of collection-wise paracompactness, I think, sounds plausible. So, so, you know, having canonical IDs, similar to the online encyclopedia of integer sequences, I think that's gonna be very useful for us, we have references here, this is something that we are gonna require to be merged into master, however, for your own personal use of the PyBase, you can put whatever you want in there, and if you don't want anyone to scoop you, you want to do some work on your own, it is currently open source, these branches are on GitHub, so people can see if they are personally spying on you, but it's obfuscated a little bit, so unless they know to spy on you, they're not gonna, it's not gonna show up on the public search results just yet, so you can play around with it whatever you want, and that's actually, that's the story of how PyBase began, actually, it was about Co-Zero complement, you wanted to know examples, and you get your say, James.
Yeah, I was looking at a Co-Zero complemented property that I knew nothing about, and I needed a list of non-CCC, non-perfectly normal T3.5 spaces, if I recall, and again, Gary could list off a bunch of those off the top of his head, and I could not, and I just felt like, there should be an easier way to get it, like, let's get a half dozen to look at and see if I can work through these manually, and find a starting point for a theorem or property that they share, or something, that's kind of where this came from.
Are there any questions? Okay, let's thank the speaker.
Thank you very much.